Well, they got hot at the right time of year. It's good for them.
They did, they did. I like our Dodger affiliate, their bases loaded and struck out last night.
And think about how good the idea of Salem was pitching good.
I know. Well, you know, it's all about how you peak, right? What time you peak.
Not only that, Tommy John, Tommy John takes two years to come back from.
Yeah.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi Lori.
Lori.
Hi, yes, you are.
Can you see Aaron's work?
Who is it there?
Aaron.
Hi, Mary. Hello. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Regional School District Eight Board of Education Regular Meeting, Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, we'll call order, call roll call. I said eighteen. I did. Thank you, wrong, the eighteen. Judy?
Here.
Mary? Rob?
Rob, Job, Heber.
Jessica? Joe?
Uh, Joe Connor, evening.
Lori? Lori, Mike, Andover. Jean?
Jean Wilson Marlborough.
Eric?
Eric Shevchenko, Andrew.
Mike? Sue?
Sue Stolfi Marlborough.
And I'm Kathleen Goodwood Heber. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comments? Heber, Andover, Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comments second of the meeting agenda is set aside so that the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act in discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Add additions or deletions to the agenda? Nothing to add at this time? Or delete? We have a new board member with us. Welcome Eric Shevtenko, who is, um, has the pleasure of sitting next to a family member?
Yes, I was gonna do a joke, but it was by coincidence, had the same last name.
It is, it's a coincidence.
It's a very common name around here.
A very, very common name, I guess. Really, it's our cherished daughter. I'm very pleased to be able to sit next to her, that is, Board of Education leaders.
Kathleen, may, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, so it's Kathleen, you, Scott, Eric, or Lori, can anybody remind me about, um, Andover, do, are they on a different cycle with, um, elections?
No, Judy, this is, um, Eric's filling Stephanie Nykroff's term. Do you remember?
I, I know that, but I thought something, I thought that they got on, on a different month or something than, than some of the other towns.
That's true, they hold.
I also, I also filled a spot for someone that had, uh, had to resign recently.
Correct.
So that was why I came, you of twenty twenty, um, and, and Eric.
So Andover does hold their elections in June, May, I'm sorry, May. Um, so if during a normal election cycle, the Andover, if there were openings in Andover, there may be a new board member joining us at the June meeting, but because we, Eric's filling in, he's coming in as soon as he may available.
So they, they are on a little bit different of a schedule than Marlborough and Heber?
That's correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'll just mention that, um, I graduated from Ram in nineteen seventy-two. And, uh, we'll be graduating in fifteen years later. I grew up in Normal, so, so I didn't, um, live with. Finished to do here until, uh, two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, welcome, thank you for stepping up.
Absolutely welcome.
And, um, we also have our new student Board of Education representative, Rowan Hafrelen. Hi, Rowan.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here at school.
We're happy to have you here. Anything you want to tell us about yourself?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm Frank Heber. I am junior at Ram. And, uh, yeah, just, I, I, I was really interested in applying for the, uh, message from Dexter High School to say that they're looking for a junior to fill the spot. And yeah, I'm just really, uh, interested in hearing what you all have to say, so.
We're looking at your contributions to as a student, so welcome home, nice to see you. Do we have a student rep report?
Sure.
All right.
So I feel as though I thought there hasn't been still, because all the Shevtenko jokes have already been made.
No, next, next time you come with a new one. Put it on the agenda.
I'll keep you. But, um, I just wanted to say that once again, glad to be here in person. Um, virtual last year was a bit of a trade rep for, I think, all of us. Um, and I just wanted to touch on just a couple of happenings at Ram, which were the senior class. Um, for those of you who don't know, there is going to be a homecoming, uh, September thirtieth, there's going to be these outdoors. Um, either tent and I think it did, that's pretty sweet. Um, everyone's really, really happy about that, especially, um, I think the senior class, because we had an avalanche, we haven't had it since sophomore year. So it's just a great way to sort of, you know, close out our homecoming season. Um, and I meant to mention this in the last meeting, but it's completely slipped my mind. Um, we switched from the block schedule to the eight periods a day, and I have had, I think overall people are satisfied. I just heard a conversation today about how other people prefer the block schedule, but I think overall people are just happy to be in school again. Um, and I totally, totally lose my mind. Um, for seniors, the college process is really, it is, it is now coming fresh pieced. Um, especially for early action, people are looking on their essays, supplementals, and looking at their application. It's pretty stressful, but we're getting through it. And, uh, lastly, fall sports are now coming to an end. Um, you can do like cross-country soccer, football, shooting, anything like that. Um, and that's, uh, volleyball as well. And so everyone's trying to soak in their last couple of games and spirit days before the next.
Rowan, did you have anything? I don't want to put you on the spot for the first time here, but it's up to you.
But yeah, I, well, I just wanted to talk a little bit about like, uh, maybe stuff to do with like the inquiry cabinet with, uh, Ramdale School and for high school. So I think that, you know, because I, I remember I was talking to Dexter High School about like, you know, potentially like, uh, cutting the inquiry cabinet and making all the classes more inquiry based and basically because there are less middle schools coming up every year, and I feel like a kind of team. And yeah, just like from my perspective as somebody who's like in, in, as a part of the inquiry cabinet, I think it would still be useful to, I have that program available. I don't know if maybe it could be like an extracurricular thing, like the G D S O's and stuff. But I think that it's important like for kids to like have the opportunity to like do some work that like can be learning through like G D S O projects. And I think that, you know, he would just be useful to, uh, have, uh, those opportunities available. And I think that, uh, when you're going into high school, I feel like you should also have, uh, the opportunity to use some of those inquiry programs, you know, some of the classes in, uh, high school, hopefully, just what I had there.
For a chair report, I don't have anything other than I was really excited about the, uh, level of spirit, um, around pink and the volleyball game and all of the kids that came up to support our girls volleyball team. And I still see that happening this month. I know, um, there's more pink activities coming up. I think my sons have to wear it one day too. Uh, but I just, uh, love that the school is really involved in, um, those social activities and bringing awareness to the things that go on outside of school, really like impact other families and, um, their, their spirit and collecting money and just, you know, champions for those types of things. So it's nice to see kids doing things other than academics and getting excited about. I do not have anything else to report to your report, but I welcome my board members if there's anything they have to share. Your turn, Scott. Report, super attentive.
Well, and I have to start by saying how really thrilled I am to begin, not to begin my comments with a litany of all of the COVID challenges we may or may not be facing at this point and, um, how that's, that's impacting us. Um, we really are feeling like we have, um, met the challenge and, uh, up to this point is very, very successful. As was already mentioned, we are moving forward with some of our time proven and well-loved activities. Our pink pink was, uh, fairly successful. We made, um, over three thousand dollars in donations coming evening. Um, we had a wonderful crowd in the, in the gym and it really felt, we haven't had that type of event in a couple of years. And then, um, as Lily mentioned, we have the homecoming dance coming. We're looking forward to this Thursday evening, our concert, our first in-person concert for our chorus and band, um, Middleland High School, um, in a while. So we really are feeling like we're able to provide our students with, um, those activities and events that we know are so important to the high school experience and middle school experience. Um, you know, they look a little different and we're, we still are feeling like we're in transition phase. So as Lily mentioned, the homecoming dance is, is outside. That's not something we normally do. Um, we wouldn't want to, um, have our students come to a really disappointing event and just stick them outside under the stars. So we really felt it was important to do what we could to make the event special. So very much like we, we did for prom last year, um, we're renting a service tent, um, to kind of keep everyone dry and warm. And it's lit, it has lights, it's got a dance, uh, dance floor. Um, I have to thank our music boosters who reached out and with a generous donation to help with our efforts to rent the tent. As you can imagine, when the senior class organizes an upcoming event, they don't calculate a rental of a five thousand dollar service tent into the mix. And so, um, it is a fundraiser and you're not going to raise a lot of funds if you're having to lay up that money. So the booster's donation was really welcome, so I thank them for that. Um, we're also utilizing some of our, um, our bester grant money, um, that was provided for COVID reasons, including, you know, social emotional learning, um, areas. And so we're able to use some of that money for the, um, the expense as well. So I feel, you know, I think we're all feeling very positive at this point that, um, we're doing what we need to do. And as a result, we're finding that, um, our return is still continues to be overwhelmingly successful. So I'm thrilled with that. Um.
So how much does it cost to go to homecoming? Does it cost students?
You know, I don't have to buy tickets. I don't worry about that. When I get asked, twenty, twenty dollars?
Is it?
Yeah. We've started the budget process. Uh, we haven't really started the public discussions yet, but we are certainly beginning the process. We've met with our coordinators, um, to begin the process of developing, um, their individual department budgets. Principals are beginning the process of developing school budgets. And so, um, we're busy work in terms of developing what eventually will be, I'll be presenting to the board for the first time in December, kind of the highlights, the, the bigger items that we're anticipating, some of the bigger savings we may be anticipating. Um, and then a full budget presentation in January. So we are beginning that process and, um, looking forward to successful. The, so we typically for the budget process, I'll do the first, um, presentation in January. Then we typically meet once a week for four to five weeks for, um, board workshops, budget workshops. Um, and then we go to, um, we have our district meeting in April and then the record.
Anything for Scott? Hey, Scott. Consent agenda? Approval of minutes from September twentieth? That's in closure ten point one. Anybody have anything for, around the minutes?
Um, I just have a question for clarification, really. Um, on the scheduling of upcoming Board of Education meetings with, I think, eleven, um, minutes. Um, I just, the wording is, um, I just want to make sure I understand this. To let Scott let us know by email three days prior to any meeting if you'll be attending remotely or in person. So are we supposed to email him every month to tell him how we're attending, or is it just assumed that we'll be in person unless we contact him?
You know, if you, I think what's, people typically are contacting me if they're going to be remote, and that works absolutely fine.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were required to do.
So to clarify, the expectation is that you're in person unless you email Scott? And that should be done for the senior board. I think, I know this is our first time trying to do it, so it's all good, but I think.
Thank you.
That's a good question, Eric, thank you. Um, request for unpaid leave of absence? Ten point two? Oh, yes, we do. You need to make a motion to accept the minutes. Thank you, Rob.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Anybody second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Judy?
I do not. Uh, do you want to vote? Yes.
Yes, I vote.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you guys, I just told Scott, I like literally ran in here and I didn't feel prepared for this, and it's evident because.
No, no, you're, you're fine. I just, I thought you meant discussion. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Judy. Mary?
Yes.
Robs?
Yes.
Jessica? Not here. Joe?
Uh, yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Mike? Not here. Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience with me, guys. Request for unpaid leave of absence?
This is, um, from our middle school nurse who, um, who, I'll send our congratulations to her. Just recently had a, um, new baby. Um, and there is a, um, the baby's doctor is suggesting that she not put the baby in daycare for a while due to some medical reasons, so she's requesting a baby. Certainly a reasonable request.
Certainly a lawful request.
Those need to make a motion.
Correct.
So do I, uh, have a motion to accept the unpaid leave of absence for the middle school nurse?
I'll make that motion. This is Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that? Sorry, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call a vote.
I, I, Kathleen, yeah, I just, Scott, you've received, um, everything that, that you need, that's proper for the request.
That's correct, Judy.
Thank you.
Anything else, Judy?
No, that's it.
Okay. We'll call a vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Mike? He's not here. Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes? Old business. Fraud policy, eleven point one.
If you remember, we did a, um, the policy committee presented, um, the, in the first reading of the fraud policy at the June meeting. Um, and this resulted from our recent audit in which the auditor, um, commented that we were missing a policy, a fraud policy. And, um, you know, I think we, we all take it for granted that, that fraud is illegal. And, um, we don't necessarily need a fraud policy to, uh, law fraud itself. But what this policy does is it provides, um, directives for, um, employees and those associated with the district for what are the appropriate actions to take in the event that we become aware that fraud is taking place. So, um, this would be a new policy. It's not an amended policy, um, since we did not have one, uh, in place. And again, this really, um, is a great policy that provides a roadmap should any, um, member of the Ram community become aware or become suspicious of fraud and what steps they need to take. Uh, without this policy, um, you're really leading it up to people's, um, as gentlemen, maybe I not know who they should go to, um, to report it or not. So, um, so this would be the second reading and an opportunity to, um, make a, a motion to approve the policy.
Um, and this was in the policy committee, I assume? Came out of policy or this is just for?
Came, now, this came out of policy in June, and it's, this is the second meeting, so it was provided as a first meeting.
Um, do I have a motion to accept the fraud policy reviewed by the policy committee in June?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the policy today.
Accept the fraud policy.
Policy.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. This is Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Discussion?
Is, is this fixed on? Questionnaire? Correct. So when, when, when we look at, uh, review our policies or consider a new one, we rely on our legal, um, associates, certainly Goodwood, and they provide us with template, um, you know. So, so the policies that you see are really rarely if ever actually generated from the administration of the board. They're typically generated from the, our, our legal team, and then we might modify it to meet any specific needs. But it certainly ensures that boards of it across the state are working with the same fundamental goals.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call a vote to accept the fraud policy. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Sue?
Yes.
And I may ask, motion passes? New business. Review, discussion, and possible action of the new music and social studies courses?
These, um, these were presented to the, um, program subcommittee, um, and then are coming out of the program subcommittee for, um, for approval. There are, um, new courses proposed for music and for social studies. Eric, do you know if, is Beth Fisher or Jen Stovall here? There, okay, great. So, um, we have Beth Fisher, our, um, music and art coordinator, who can certainly answer any questions regarding, um, keyboarding class. And Jen Stovall will be able to answer the questions regarding the social studies, um, proposals. These are, um, really, um, the idea is to provide additional student opportunities in the opportunities and book. Um, so these would both, these are all, uh, most of the proposals are electives, um, for new electives. Keep in mind that, um, our students are now working with a new state mandated set of graduation requirements, which require an additional credit for graduation and additional requirements for elective programming. One of the challenges we have at high school is we're finding that with the new requirements for students to take additional electives, it can be difficult for some students to schedule those. The number of electives any graduation into their schedule. Having additional choices will help to provide more opportunities and choices for students. Um, when we, when, when, when new electives are approved, um, it doesn't mean that they'll necessarily be offered because they become now part of our, um, program of studies. They're courses that students can choose. Um, simply because we add a new elective to our program doesn't mean that we're also adding staff. So, um, it may be that we add five new courses this year and only one or two of them actually run next year based upon student interest or how well we can situate it into, um, students' schedules. We may find in some cases that, um, we haven't made any staffing changes and, um, we're finding in order to meet the graduation requirements of all the students that need to flesh out their electives, we might add six aside, you know, another section that will provide additional opportunities for students. But we're not asking for additional staff in these requests. This is just simply asking. But, we're not asking for additional staffing in these requests, this is just simply asking to expand our program of studies and provide more opportunities, elective opportunities for students. And the keyboard class is a, one of the challenges, I know that the music program has had, is we have lots of opportunities for accomplished musicians than, of course, but we don't have many opportunities for more casual musicians. So, if you are just, you know, passionate for music, or you're interested in music, but you're not a, an expert, soonest you may feel there's no place for you in the music department, the piano electives would allow for us to provide greater student participation in music and it would be very helpful for us, again, opening up one of the fine arts elective areas for more students. And Beth Fisher, I'll let you add anything to that? That I might have missed?
Good evening. Yeah, we're always trying to find ways to bring more students into our wing to make music, you know, the benefits of music for all of our students and right now we are very accessible to students who are already engaged in music, as Scott was saying, but we, we don't have for the nominees of the world who would like to be involved. So to make the music program much more accessible to all of our students, no matter, you know, where their abilities are, it's really important for us.
What I just should add also is that one of the, you know, because music is obviously a, you need musical instruments to make it happen. We already have the keyboards for this program, so.
Yep, they would replace the, the keyboard lab needed replacing this year, so it's been replaced with people that are suitable for both the music technology classes and the piano classes.
So there wouldn't be any additional costs?
No. Some piano notes, but they're, they're minimal.
Does the board have any questions? Lori?
Thank you. I think these sound wonderful, I just want to practice with that, the more music we can get in, I, I think that's wonderful for, for students. I had a question in the last sentence of the first paragraph of the rationale. If classes are popular, the courses could expand to include piano three and advanced field, allowing students not engaged in traditional band or chorus classes, to participate in these classes all four years. So, would this not be an option? I'm thinking of the student that takes private piano lessons, who is in band or chorus, but might want an advanced piano elective, should that become available. Would being in band or chorus preclude them from participating in this, is it, like, would they not have enough room in their?
Yeah, and it is, they're, they'd be a semester class, so they're much more flexible to fit into their schedule and that was part of our thinking, because we have so many of, you know, kids who are gone who are taking private lessons, that then you'd be a new access, at, at the level that they're at, when we add those levels, so yes, that would be wonderful.
And so, what would the prerequisite for a court, I know this might be from where we are tonight, but I found really interesting and I have a personal statement, so I'm asking you a question. How would a student get into an advanced piano class? I mean, if you're thinking sort of halfway or three quarters of the way through high school, keyboards is back in middle school, would something be worked out with the private lesson teacher, like, how would that work if they didn't take piano one or two?
They would, if they haven't taken piano one yet, but they've been taking piano classes independently, is what you're saying? So that they're at the level of going into three, they would just have to be okay by a teacher, they would come play to the teacher just to assess that they're at the level, so they're going to be able to do the work for class, that, yeah, that would be perfectly by the music teachers to assess.
Perfect, I think it's great to offer a piano option as a course in high school. You know, I love that we have those keyboards, I, you know, piano isn't something that you typically see or that I've seen in a lot of high school, it's a person to take, but certainly a widely loved and popular instrument, so I think it's, I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, I love that it's so accessible for our middle schools moving up too, it's already something they're comfortable with and they can build upon.
Great, and again, for the, for the high school in particular, in letting us fill some additional or help us to fill additional elective slots, this would be a real benefit for us as well.
Anybody else from the board regarding the piano one and two music classes?
Okay, and social studies has a number, they're a little bit more complicated than adding piano. So, Jen, thank you for joining us tonight. We're, the social studies department is looking to do a couple of things. One is for our freshman and sophomore programs to expand upon our current global studies and Western European history, which tend to be fairly narrowly focused, and instead offer a, a more wider viewing world history, one world history two program. That's a common, you're seeing that fairly often in social studies across the state. And then, if you look at the materials, you see that the department reached out to students and investigated what was being offered in other districts as well and has a number of electives that they, they propose. One, the African-American and Latin American history is a required course, that's the course mandated by the state of Connecticut that we offer. We offer, we have to offer it, but it's, the students don't, you don't need to actually run it if there's not enough student interest. One of the challenges that all of us are having with this state mandate is that it's required to be a full year course. And for most of our students to add a full year elective is a real challenge, particularly if you're taking other full year electives. And so, we're, we're not convinced that we're going to have a lot of students who are going to be able to fit that into their schedule anyway. I know that there's been requests from around the state of, of the Department of Ed to allow us to offer them as semester courses, but up to this point, that has, is not being allowed. The state is developing a curriculum for us to use so that Ram won't be needing to actually write that curriculum. The four electives being proposed, genocide studies, minorities in America, sports in society, and women's studies. And Jen, can I ask you to maybe just do a real brief, a little more detail that I can give us to offer for each of those programs?
Sure, well, first of all, thank you again for this opportunity. Our efforts to move towards a world history for the ninth and 10th grade is really to provide a more comprehensive global study. We found that at least the schools in our area were offering a world history course. And so, for us, it'll be an opportunity to continue chronological sort of presentation of content that they're inheriting from the eighth grade. And we just feel that the more comprehensive approach will give students more of the cultural aspect, the economic, the social, political, but it'll be a much more present, balanced presentation of what's going on in the world from really the inception of history as we start studying it through the present. And additionally, the electives we're offering, you know, we do offer some fairly comprehensive electives and they're always very popular and we're very proud of, of that. But, you know, we've added a lot of classes over the years since my tenure at Ram and again, I'm very thankful for that, but this past spring, we had an opportunity to poll our students and we got, you know, almost 400 students responding and they really had a sort of broad area of interest. And we settled on a minorities in America elective. And that's really to offer a comprehensive look at the achievements of diverse minorities in the United States with really a focus on their achievements. Out of concern that we wouldn't be able to run African-American, Latin American class just because students are so strapped for electives and busy schedules, the genocide study class is one we wanted to do for quite some time, it's always an area of interest for students. They're exposed to the Holocaust in both their English and social studies curriculum, so our approach would be more contemporary and it would afford us the opportunity, not just to explore the age stages of the genocide, but also the global community's response to it, the United Nations, gyms and so forth. And it's really, again, not, you know, focus on the macabre of it, but also to sort of focus on what can we do as a society to try to prevent these events from happening. The sports and society class is going to be a whole lot of fun, it's really going to look at all facets of sports and the impact and role it has on society, economic, social, political. But it'll also be a nice opportunity to explore areas of interest in sports that students might not have heard of or really don't understand how impactful sports are to our society as a whole. The women's study history is going to take a look at women from a global perspective and we can look at, you know, their capacity to overwhelm, overcome adversity, but also really just to kind of look at the human element of it, women from all across the globe experiencing very different opportunities, very different lifestyles and it's going to be a nice way for our students to really examine that. So we're very excited about these courses. Our goal for next year is to offer them, you know, new electives at the ninth and, at the 11th and 12th grade level and to be truthful with you, it's really all going to be indicative of my staffing. Our hope is to bring that down to, some of those classes down to the 10th grade. We found that not being able to offer the child and development class, we see a lot more of those students moving towards our psychology classes, our abnormal psych, our child and adolescent psychology class. So we want to be able to open up just more opportunities for our students, at least as early as 10th grade, to take some of those courses that we feel are most age grade appropriate in those electives. And that'll start them on an opportunity to be able to not just take more, you know, in addition to their graduation requirements, but, you know, also to just kind of balance out their schedule. What we find with our 11th graders is that they can't have study halls, they're so packed in their schedule that they have their lunch, you know, between chemistry and labs and their, you know, AP classes and, you know, even study classes for some of our students, there's really just not a lot of free time. So our hope is that once we do this one, like, run through next year, that we'll be able to kind of broaden and open it up. But we're really excited for the kids that we can offer electives that really do reflect their interests. So, our hope is that we can get these off and running next year. I have a very motivated department who's willing to write the curriculum and I'm confident that that's going to get done, I'm ready to work with Mr. May to get the educational opportunities handbook all set. And so we're in a really good place, we have a nice timeline, we've been exploring through all of our professional development this school year so far, opportunities for us to take a look at what resources are available to us and just really look at the content that we want to consider for our classes. So I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you Jen.
Sure, thank you, and if anyone has any questions? Jen, please, just feel free.
So, for the classes that are limited to 12th grade, would those potentially be available for 12th graders heading into next year?
Yes, the plan is to start them, I don't know which ones will run specifically fall or spring, I'd have to work with Chris Mayer, but the electives will be, the curriculum will be written this summer and it will be ready to start. And the courses will be listed in the educational opportunities handbook in January for students to start seeing their classes at the end of January into February. So we'll offer these new electives in tandem with our current popular electives.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anybody from the board have any questions? Comments? Jen, thank you for your hard work and for organizing all of that. I just, my only thing is I'm reading.
Thank you for the opportunity for presenting.
Yeah, and you do a good job, definitely. My only, my only query is I'm just reading the descriptions and I guess for me, seeing words like, "Students must have a commitment to struggle through challenging materials, only occasional instructional support provided." When I see that, I, I get worried, especially coming off of a COVID year, there are many students who need instructional support, so I just want to be sure that that is not limiting to anybody who does require support, even if it is a level one class. I know it's high school, but I still think kids who need support should get it and, you know, I would love to see that actually occasional, that Lori's being.
Sure, no, we always, we differentiate all the time for our students and, you know, one of the things we found is that, you know, our students can do hard things and like, I, I mean, I feel like my students have come into this year, even my level one, and they're all very prepared and I know that that's, it's, it's different for every student, they're, we're getting them, but we, we get them how we get them and so we start where they're at and then we do everything in our capacity to fill them up. A lot of our level one students have 504s, some of whom even have IUPs that have similar accommodations to students that might be in some of our lower level classes. And I feel very strongly that my teachers do a great job of supporting our students and so we measure their success, we provide the feedback, the remediation and the support. And we see a tremendous amount of growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So I feel very strongly that, you know, students struggle, some of the content is, you know, mature content, but they persevere and they're, they're really proud and formate. But I definitely appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Goodman, and we absolutely accommodate all of our students. And we, we know that a level one class could be just as heterogeneous as a level two class and so we, we meet them where we are and we support them.
And I think you bring up a really, really valid and I think really interesting point for us in that when we write these types of documents, you know, they're kind of for perpetuity. You know, we write them assuming a normal world. But we would never take a student who, you know, only a kid, like, oh, you need more help than occasionally, so therefore you're not eligible. We're not working like that now. And, but to, to create wording that kind of fits our current COVID adaption then creates a very different document that, you know, that may not be necessarily valid five years ago, two years ago, three years ago, 10 years ago. So, you know, in practice, we're not limiting ourselves to saying to a student, you know, you don't fit those qualifications, so therefore you can't take this course. Right now, you know, we're, we're recognizing that you may have struggled more than you ever have and, you know, we're going to let you take these and challenge yourself with these because we know that you and the rest of us are all coming out of this very challenging period. I think that's a really good point though, because, you know, if we don't keep that in mind, we will be, we will not be serving our students as well as we should. Which I think is part of the challenge is putting the language into a document. So we don't want a document, you know, five years from now that's reflective of what we went through now.
Even so, I, I do understand that students should be more independent if they're taking a higher level class, but occasional just sounds like, you bet, usually occasionally, you know, you weren't a good fit for this class or, you know, or if the child gets a C because they really did need more support and they suffered in class and, you know, based on the level of instruction that this teacher had to do to support them. I would want to help against them, they needed more. Sometimes you don't figure it out until you get in there and you see the content, so. For me, it's about the, it's about the student and what they need.
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, can I, can I weigh in? Miss what? I, I have mixed feelings about that and, and I will tell you why. I have a daughter at the UPI, which is a competitive school and a lot of kids there are struggling and she is not. And I honestly think it's because some of her Ram teachers brained in her heart. Not that I want kids to be brained in really hard, but she was used to that and used to taking difficult classes. I, I just got about that, so I do think our goal should be to stretch kids, but certainly. but certainly, you know, I think as support is needed. And Kathleen, I know you as an experienced educator would agree, it differs. So like, we, I think there's got to be a way that we let kids know that we will be there, but we do want them to gain that independence and all, and that value. And I think it's just maybe communicating that to the kids.
Thank you, Judy. Lori?
I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Well, I think when we, because RAM does have leveled classes, you know, we have a specific, like, expectation that coincides with the level. Otherwise, if we were, you know, if it was full heterogeneity, we would have the same course description. And we find that we do have students that want the honors class. We do have families that want to have their student in a class that reflects a specific amount of rigor. But again, like, we, really with the exception of our advanced placement classes, we really don't have any prerequisite to take a class, you know? If a student is recommended for a level and they really want to move up, a parent will just override and get our students. And there may be some students who might get an A in a Level Two class because, you know, they're high performing and that particular place is really good, but they want to challenge themselves. And they may find that maybe they're earning a B minus or a C plus in the Level One, but they're really sort of proud of themselves. So I certainly don't want to give the impression that because we have, you know, specific criteria and skill sets for particular levels that we are not willing to support students. Because, you know, we have students who are very much struggling learners, but their parents may want them in a Level One class because of potentially the environment. And we work with those students and we help them, you know? And we have a standard. And, you know, our hope, even with our Level Two classes, we maintain rigor and we maintain standards. And I think that's why RAM is where it is and maybe why Ms. Spencer Clark's daughter is, first of all, got into WPI, but is also very, very successful there. And so please know that we are going to support all of our students, regardless of the level and their ability. And if they are struggling or they want to stay in a Level One class and they're struggling, but they want to persevere, then my goodness, we'll definitely support that as well.
Jen, you kind of faded. You know, I think what, one of the things I was trying to say is not that I would ever be totally thrilled or excited if my kids got Cs, but some kids who go to college with her, you know, they never ever got a B, and they're just beside themselves when they're not doing well. So, you know, I think, I think that's a long discussion, and I'm not saying otherwise. I really believe in both giving kids as much challenges as possible, but also being there to support them. And I think, I think we're doing that. Jen, are, I mean, are we doing that, that we're challenging them but am supporting them? Or are we committed to that?
I believe we are. I mean, you know, at the beginning of the school year, we all, you know, the last few years, we've had a compilation of student videos. And one of the things that they always say, and we share this as a sort of positive for professional development, is that they're so grateful for the expectation and the rigor that RAM offers, that they truly feel prepared to go to college to not just critically examine things, but just their writing abilities and understand even simple things like effective citations, which could potentially get you kicked out of school. Like, we just, we have high expectations, and our kids need them. You know, some struggle, but we always support our kids. Even our, a lot of our AP students this year, we found, have, you know, 504 plans. They're requiring accommodations, and their teachers are providing them, working within what the College Board requires, but also supporting these students if they need their extra time, if they need, you know, to reduce their assignments. Like, we're really doing all of, all of that. I believe that we are. Seven through 12, I have a very, very strong department. I know my middle school teams are doing that. The seventh grade teachers are getting kids from three different districts who are coming in at so many different levels. This year haven't had a real school year since almost by fourth grade, and they're doing such a good job with our kids. And so I feel our department really does support and meet them and effectively communicate with parents.
Anything else, Jen?
No, but I think Kathleen, what you said is important. We want, we want rigor and support, and they're, they can go together.
Yes, that's what I was saying. There's a difference between rigor and the level of support. Exactly.
And I just wanted to say that I agree with that, Kathleen. I think when, when I hear you speaking, Jennifer, about the level of support offered, I think the statement occasional instructional support, and even in the honors, minimal instructional support shortchanged the support given by the faculty. And I think that there's a difference between, as Kathleen was saying, rigor, even at the honors level, and the expectations of what the assignments are, and support that might be needed. You know, you may have a student who is honors level in, you know, a variety of subjects, and getting into statistics level that might be their first, you know, exposure to it, and say they're a really physical science-minded person, they may need more support in an honor social studies course than they might in a physics class. But that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be there, not going to do extremely well, right? So I just think that those statements shortchange what the teachers are doing and have been pre-COVID and will continue to do post-COVID, and it doesn't accurately represent what's, you know, the need that's there. You don't want a student at any level to think, I'm not supposed to ask for support because this course description says this course, I shouldn't have to, and then go unasked and not do well as a result. Because we know how that can have an effect, a snowball effect, on other courses, on mindset, you know, in the immediate future and then in the longer term future as well. So not that, you know, I'm suggesting that you go back and rewrite this, and it's probably the common language throughout many other courses, but just based on what you described, I do think that that statement, I'd like to see a focus on student behavior as opposed to support being offered because, as you said, they're very individualized, and you don't necessarily know what each class of students is going to need until you have them in front of you each term. So.
Sure, we can absolutely consider. This is the language that we currently have for our Level One, Level Two, and our honors courses. So we, in an effort to sort of stay consistent in case there was a concern from families. But yes, we can, the bold-faced words in there, we can absolutely reevaluate that or reword that. That's really not a problem because I appreciate your sentiment, but also, you know, that you recognize too that we are doing this. But I think our intention was that, like, the expectation, you know, if you wanted to take this, you wouldn't be able to do that on your own. But perhaps the caveat being that, obviously, if you need additional supports, that the teachers are willing to provide that course. So yes, we can go back and reconsider that for our World History. Our other classes, our electives are heterogeneous, so it would be a mixed bag in that regard, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And please don't, you know, firsthandly, I know that the department does a great job of scaffolding and supporting students. I just think it shouldn't, it should, it should showcase that. And I agree about it being student behavior because if students could do it independently, then we wouldn't need teachers. So I really think that there should be something in there that says that you guys are doing exactly what you stated, which I know you do.
Absolutely. I'm glad to change that.
Any other questions or comments for Jen?
Sure.
Again, thank you, Jen, for your hard work. That's a lot of, that's a lot of effort, and this has been going on for months, you know, when you've been on the circuit. So certainly appreciate all of that for our students.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we need to call a vote. Do we want to do them separately with piano and then Social Studies second?
I agree. I can do those together.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Any other comments from the board regarding that? Okay, so I need a motion then?
I think, I need a motion to accept the new courses as outlined in the board agenda for, let me just look it up. It says, say, piano, um...
Piano one and?
Piano one and two, and Social Studies, scope and sequence. Now, what does, what does Social Studies say? Um, other?
Judy, Social Studies doesn't list, not in the agenda, but the new electives, well, the new course offerings in Social Studies would be World History One.
Perf- perfect.
World History Two. Genocide Studies. Minorities in America, Sports and Society, and Women's Studies.
Okay, thank you very much. That's perfect.
Did the board word, he said, you read? You read it for us?
I was going to go back to what he said.
Okay. Want me to read it again? Sure, okay. So we're, the proposal is, the motion is to propose the acceptance of the new course offerings, including Keyboarding One and Two, Music Department, and in Social Studies, World History One, World History Two, Genocide Studies, Minorities in America, Sports and Society, and Women's Studies.
We have a second, please, on Judy's.
Second.
Thank you, Sin. Any more discussion? We call a vote? Judy?
Yes, and thank you both of you for the presentations. They were very helpful.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Jen and Deb, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, Jen and Deb.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion and possible action of the HVAC contract.
Hey, we're going to switch gears a little bit.
There's just a ten.
I'm using Social Studies to HVAC, which is just as important to our students as we. We'll soon discover, when we finish the upgrades to the locker rooms in particular, we'll all benefit from air-conditioned locker rooms. I think I can say that. And everyone will know exactly what I'm talking about if you walk down the hallway. So it's part of our capital projects for this year. We have the addition of air conditioning in the locker rooms and then in the coaches' offices, and then the upgrade and replacement of the air conditioning units in the head-end room in the local media center in the high school, which is our IT center, and the dimmer room in the auditorium, which encloses all of the controls for our whole range of theater lighting. We hired RZ Design Associates, which came to us highly recommended and we used last year on last year's major HVAC project, which was very successful. So we're very happy with the services of RZ Design. They provide the bid documents and then oversee the jobs themselves. We had four bidders for this particular job, and I included those in the, I think I included them in more of my Friday updates and then as well, regarding our packet. Savemore, Holding and Heating, The Nutmeg Companies, Escalation Chemical, and Allstate Construction. RZ Design Associates reviewed each of the bid documents, and their recommendation, based upon their experience and their review of the documents, is that we accept the bid from Savemore. One, certainly is also beneficial that they were the lowest bidder. We budgeted $255,000 for the project, and Savemore's bid came in at $234,800. So our recommendation to the board would be that we we take the expert advice from our RZ Design Associates and accept the bid from Savemore, Including Heating, for our current HVAC projects.
So do we want to make a motion for discussion purposes?
I'll make the motion, just, Joe, that we accept the recommendation from RZ Design Associates Incorporated to go with Savemore for $255,000 for the HVAC project.
$234,800, Joe?
I'm sorry, my mistake. $230, $234,800.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Jane.
Thanks, we, discussion?
Is there a concern of COVID supply chain like that? It's going to be a concern here.
I think you could ask that question. I almost had anything, the answer's yes. Everything from food in the cafeteria to this, yes. I mean, that certainly is going to be a concern for us. Mike Schleyoffer? I'm assuming you're there, you're out there? Has that issue, has that question come up regarding the supply chain and the impact that it may have on this particular project?
What was the question, Scott?
Is there, with all the supply, supply chain challenges across industries, are there concerns from either RZ Design Associates or Savemore or anyone else you heard come that might impact our ability to have the job in the timeline that was specified?
Currently, they feel that they're going to be able to stand to the 250 days.
Do you know, are they relying on supplies coming from overseas at this point? Or are we looking at equipment that's already local to the States, you know?
I know the HVAC for the locker rooms, that equipment is assembled here in Oklahoma. As far as the little mini split systems, I'm not sure where they're, origin is from there.
So we're getting assurances as much as we can rely on. But it's an excellent question, because, yes.
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is the contingency of the project not able to finish and have to bring it back to the capital next year and could provide some confusion.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Hi, this is, this is Jean. Could we ask our new member to speak a little louder? I'm having trouble hearing them.
Sure. What I'm saying is that if we had a supply chain problem, we were not able to complete the project in our current budget year, then we would have to go through this process again for the following budget year, which could, in capital, which could create confusion with our talent screen.
I see. So we would have to send it back out to bid again, is what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that we would have to put the money back into next year.
I get it, I get it. Well, let's hope our supply chain issues don't stop the project, just for that. Just for that hallway.
Eva, have you, um, amongst any discussions amongst business managers, has that question come up at all?
So, this, this money is coming from our capital improvement fund. Our capital improvement fund has the ability to roll forward. It doesn't have to be finished in the fiscal year. So, if the process is already in place, it will move forward. The one plus is the contract that we're hoping that the board will allow the superintendent to enter into as penalties, um, if the project is not completed. And today, you know, nothing has been noted about the supply chain issue as Michael has stated.
Okay, so you are able to, or we are able to roll over capital to the following, to the following...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the HVAC proposal? Okay, I'm gonna call a vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. We are all excited that there will be something for that hallway.
Oh, I can't tell you how excited our students and athletes will be to know that their, their spaces will be air-conditioned. I think it's important to note too that, um, this is a symbolic quote, not a symbol, but it's, it's symbolic of the efforts and the, um, commitment of the board to ensuring that the Ram facility, um, be this facility that our students need and deserve, and that this is the last additional HVAC project. Um, this covers the, the remaining un-air-conditioned areas and, um, really kind of closes that circle. So, I have to thank the board in general for all of their support in these areas, in particular in areas like the waiting room, um, some of our more troublesome classrooms and the locker rooms. So, greatly appreciated, I know.
Our, I think it's our pleasure because I remember having that discussion a while ago, so that's why you don't hear much discussion now. Um, and certainly the facilities committee, um, has been, uh, that subcommittee has been very big in supporting our students within the structures.
Kathy, I, I did have one question. Um, when, uh, when is the work going to start?
Mike, am I correct in that the, um, actual installation is scheduled for the week of April vacation?
Either April vacation or after graduation, they have to have the unit up on the roof.
Anything else, Joe?
Uh, just on that comment, so April, we're gonna put the, we're gonna put the ductwork in and, and we, so...
The ductwork's already there, Joe. They would just be taking the old unit off and putting the new unit on and then hooking up the piping and electrical to it, which, so a lot of that can be done prior to the unit being removed. They're gonna do a lot of the roughing prior to the, um, the units being transferred.
But the locker rooms weren't roughed in before, were they?
What do you mean, the locker rooms weren't roughed in?
So, do we have ductwork going into the locker rooms? Because that, that does part of the, is part of the, the project.
Yes, we currently have ductwork in the locker rooms. They're utilizing the same ductwork. They're replacing the unit on the roof itself.
I think the question, Mike, is that in the, the locker rooms currently don't have air conditioning.
That's correct.
Correct. So, the unit that they're putting on the roof is gonna have a DX oil that'll have air conditioning. It's in the packaged unit that's gonna go on top of the roof to supply air conditioning. It's not gonna be running off the chilled water system that we have.
I, I understand that, but you, you have ductwork. That's, how is it coming from the roof into the, into the locker room in the hallways? That's ductwork, right?
Yeah, which we currently have ductwork. We have supply and returns for the locker rooms currently for heating. They're gonna use the same ductwork.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, God, thank you.
Okay, financials. Eva?
All, all right, good evening. So, in your packet, starting at 12.3A, let's see, um, the financials portion begin there. So, for the, um, net projection, the projected net projection as of, um, September 30th, 2021, um, I'm projecting a net favorable position of $2,235. Um, in addition to that, we finally saw, um, the appellate court has, um, made a decision in our favor. Um, so, we had a lawsuit that, um, has been in the district for quite some time. That had to do with the staircase. We won the original lower court case. The contractor filed an appeal and we prevailed and won the appellate court case. So, we received, um, $26,500 in that settlement and that was deposited into revenue. Um, our, um, the state of Connecticut has our enrollments completed as of October 1st, 2021. Since that has happened, we're awaiting, um, the magnet school, BOAG, and VOTES invoices. Um, so, at the next meeting, um, those should be paid and we should be able to see if there's any savings in that area. The pupil service department is constantly monitoring and ensuring, um, that they're purchasing and/or, um, closing or opening purchase orders based on the IEP plans for each individual student, based on any changes that occurs in those meetings. Um, the capital improvement fund is currently focusing on receiving and processing the payments of the invoices. Um, and then the capital non-recurring fund, um, Mr. Leslie and myself had a meeting today with, uh, Andrew Tierney and Elaine Breckin of the town, and we're just trying to finalize, um, what is outstanding. Um, and it's, there was a conduit issue that we had in the staff parking lot, visitor parking lot area, um, that we had a contractor that had, um, helped us isolate the issue, identify the problem, and had repaired the problem for us. And there's a bill of, oh, almost $9,000 outstanding. Um, so, based on our meeting today, it seems like we're going to be moving forward and paying that contractor. We just wanna make sure that, um, the BB is aware that this money will be coming out of, um, the retainage that is left to be paid to BB on this contract. Um, so, there'll be more news to follow on that. Um, are there any questions based on the, um, items that I had, uh, spoken to currently?
Kathy, it's Joe. Uh, Eva, what, how much money, um, have we dished out, uh, on legal fees for the stairs?
Um, you know what? I'm gonna need to get back to you on that. I know it's, it's a sizable amount and this, um, settlement, I think, just may either have made us whole or, um, we still probably spent out a little bit more in legal fees.
Okay, I think that would be, I would definitely like to see that. And, and, and then the other thing on that whole subject alone, um, you know, since a lot of us are coming down off this board, I, I wanna just emphasize the point that from a facilities perspective, this is a sort of a teaching moment, I guess, but, um, that the mindset going forward, you know, we've always had it, but, uh, and, and with that middle school stairs, um, it was very poorly dis, you know, developed, last-minute type of thing. We put in places to curtail that type of, uh, activity, uh, and then, you know, going forward, I just think that the future board needs to make sure that, you know, all these projects, whether it's internal or external, uh, from my perspective only, is that, um, that these projects are done, um, right the first time. I think I've preached that a few times, but this was a, 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 a very costly mistake to the district, that's, you know, could have been easily, um, if, if inspection process was done and steps were taken, permitting and so forth and so forth, uh, this wouldn't have happened. So, I, I'm just emphasizing that point to the, to the, to the board and I see some people who are on the call here as well. Um, I, I just, again, I, it, it bothers me deeply that we, um, we, we make, we've made a mistake like this. So, that's all I have to say about it, but thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions? Okay, hearing none. The next, um, item on the agenda is the Ram Middle School and High School Student Activity Report. As of September 30th, uh, the account's balanced with the bank. Um, and we still have a, a positive outlook and hopefully, um, the students now can get back into fundraising and the classes can start building their coffers again. Um, are there any questions on the student activity? Okay, hearing none. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Food Service Monthly Sales and Expenditure Reports. Um, that is 12.3C in your handout. As a reminder, we're still operating under the summer seamless operation, um, which was brought up last, um, meeting was the question about the rates that we get reimbursed as for meals. So, I included that in my memo, as you can see, under the SSL, the breakfast is $2.46 as compared to the national school lunch program, which would be, we would be normally under, which is $1.89. And the lunch rate reimbursement is $4.32 versus the $3.58. So, every meal that is, um, served, um, we, we get a little bit more reimbursement for each meal. Um, as you can see on the, um, attachment or the second page of your handout, um, you can see that, uh, we did a wonderful job in serving in the month of September. So, our total revenue has increased and, um, our net loss was, um, a little bit less than the July and August period that we had. Um, so, hopefully, we continue to see this trend moving forward. Um, and, um, hopefully, we can get out of the red and into the black sooner rather than later. But I'm open to any questions that the board may have on this topic.
Um, Eva, just a question. Are, we're serving free breakfast and lunch?
Correct.
Are there things that are charged that students?
Yes. So, any student that would like a dessert, uh, a second meal, that, uh, so say another student would like a second meal, so anything that's in addition to what is, um, the, one of the five components of the meal, your protein, your fruits, your vegetables, ensuring that that plated meal, um, is what is, um... So, whatever the component is for breakfast and/or lunch, whatever that first meal is, is free, but if you want an ice cream with cookie, an additional piece of fruit, uh, juice versus, or a bottle of water versus a milk, then all of that would be, um, additional charge as an alibi item, a bag of chips.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any additional questions on that topic? All right, hearing none. Um, the next item on the table is, uh, Budget Appropriation Transfers for the Board of Education. That's item 12.3D in your handout. Um, as you can see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 items. Um, that total $318,105.46. That will require board action. Um, these items are basically, for the most part, um, changes in classification in addition to we had negotiations. So, we'll, um, to cover, to take out the negotiation line and put into the personnel lines to cover those, um, negotiated settlements. Um, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Eva, this is Joe. Are, are we, uh, following our policy on transfers? I think it's court, would you be right? Are we?
Yes, so, yeah, so, what would, the board policy on transfers is, it's sort of court, it is not real court. Um, we have July, August, and September get done at the October board meeting. October, November, December get handled in January. January and February get handled, and March and April, um, sorry, March and April get handled in May.
Okay, so this is the appropriate time, right?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Any questions?
Eric, these, uh... I'm, I'm trying to relate this to my work finance, uh, experience, uh, the handle. Where are the funds coming from?
So, if you look at the attachments, um, that go to the memo that I wrote, you'll see the actual entries that are in for each of these, um, transfers. So, the first one is, um, journal entry number seven. And so, as you can see, the money was coming from the general supplies and it went into equipment. So, in essence, what happened on this one is that the money was budgeted under the supply line, but the correct object code that it should have come out of because of the dollar amount was equipment. So, in essence, this was just a transfer between those two, it was still in athletics, but it was just transferred there. Um, the next one would be the maintenance furniture and athletic equipment. Um, again, there was additional money that was needed due to, uh, replacement, um, cost. So, we took some money out of furniture to help offset that cost. Um, so, again, the department coordinators, um, will discuss transfers, um, that are necessary within their own departments and sometimes they'll go to Mr. Schleyhopper directly to see if he's got money to help offset any costs that might come up. Um, that, the final approval for the budget transfer rests on the board. Um, but to keep the district business moving forward, uh, we approve them internally and then present them to the board for approval.
Okay, so, so you're able to, uh, transfer on this second item, journal entry number eight, you're able to transfer from maintenance furniture to athletic equipment, or it could go the other way?
Correct.
That's okay. I'm assuming that there are some line items that, um, uh, the, uh, where the money is assigned, and, uh, if it's assigned, then it would have to stick with that line item and then other items would not follow that category. Is that correct?
So, so that happens in our capital improvement fund and our capital non-recurring fund. The Board of, uh, Education are the only authoritative bodies that can transfer funds because basically they're allocated, so the, uh, appropriation needs to be transferred by the Board of Education in that regard. The budget, um, the operating budget in, as a whole, um, administration has the, a right to transfer, um, object to object without board approval, anything going between two different objects. Um, so, that's the last three numbers in the account number, required board approval.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding financial transfers, as opposed to 12.3B?
All right, um, so I just need a motion from the board to, uh, either approve or, uh, reject the, um, transfers as presented, as Eva?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, financial transfers proposed by Eva?
This is Sue, so moved.
Second?
Second, Jean.
Thanks, Sue, thanks, Vee. We have a vote. Judy?
Are we in discussion or no?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, can we just amend that to put a dollar amount in there, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sue, do you wanna say, do you want to, uh, just add the dollar amounts since it's your motion? I don't have that to do for you.
Yeah, sure, you can, yeah.
Sure. Um, so, a motion to approve the budget appropriation transfer, transfers, um, proposed by the business manager? proposed by the business manager in the grand total of 300.
300.
Go ahead, Eva.
It's 318,105.46.
Joe, is that okay?
Yes, and I would second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. We call a vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Sue?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Eva. One more?
Thank, yep, one more. Thank you very much for that one. And so the last item for me is 12.3E, which is, um, an additional transfer, um, for Tall Timbers. So as you might remember, Tall Timbers was a, a not to exceed of $6,940. Back in August, the board approved an additional $540, um, to be paid on this contract, um, since we do not have a bulk mail permit in the district. Um, in addition, um, there was, uh, the newsletters that went out, um, included a, a little bit more than I think was originally, uh, proposed. So we're looking for an additional, um, allowance to be paid of $455 on this contract. And the money would be coming from the field drainage project to cover, um, this $455.
Any questions?
And just, just to summarize the extra expenses, one was the bulk mailing when we, when they sent it out to, um, each of the families. This was the first, um, over that you guys approved, uh, last thing. And because we don't mail anything anymore, Ram no longer has a bulk, um, nonprofit mailing permit. So we had to use, Tall Timbers has one, so it was, it was far less expensive to use theirs, even though they don't have a nonprofit designation. To purchase one for us would be very expensive. And again, that would have been a one-time thing. We just don't have the cost to mail, do those grass mailings anymore. The additional cost this, this time is, um, the four-color newsletter. The cost for Tall Timbers for the printing was more than anticipated because we expanded the, to a four or a two-color to a four-color. That depends upon all of the photographs and diagrams.
Thank you for clarifying this call. Additional questions? We need a motion to appropriate the funds from the field drainage project in the amount of $455 since it's her field project to cover postage.
I'll make that motion.
Rob, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Judy. Any discussion? Okay. We call a vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Eric? Sue?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Okay. Reports, committee reports, facilities, safety and transportation. I believe you guys have not met, or no minutes are on file from the September eighth meeting. And we have another meeting that was moved and is coming up, right?
It's coming up on Wednesday. Uh, this, not tomorrow, but not this week Wednesday, but. This Wednesday, twenty-seventh.
But the Hebrew meeting, that gives it for tomorrow too?
No, that's still on. Yes, yes. So we, we had a facility subcommittee meeting scheduled for tomorrow. And then we got notice on Friday, I think it was, that one of, one of the, the unique charters for Hebrew is their Board of Finance, prior to November first, must meet with, or selectmen in the Board of Education, to have a preliminary budget discussion. Obviously, nobody has numbers yet and, but it gives each party a chance to, um, kind of project what they might be looking at. Certainly gives the board, Hebrew Board of Finance, a chance to communicate any, um, thoughts that they may have. And, um, we got notice that, um, it would be helpful for Ram to join this, uh, this meeting. So that we, we postponed the facility for that. So it's, it's virtual. Um, I think I, I sent a, a link to everybody. You know, what I'm told, it's, you know, Ram's role is, is, is less significant to the others because we're not a counter Hebrew entity, um, yet they wanted to make sure that we got an opportunity and that we sit in on a discussion. So there's nothing definitive that comes out of it. There's nothing binding that comes out of it. It really is a, um, general discussion to look at projected enrollment trends. Again, we'll receive some of the big pieces coming as we start to prepare for our budget, so.
Thank you, Scott. Finance audit, compliance and insurance. Uh, we canceled. I know Eva's done a great job of keeping us up to date at this point. So our next meeting is scheduled for November eighteenth. Negotiations. Judy or Sue, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I, I do. We'll be talking about that later, well, when, or.
Right.
Yes. We'll be talking about contracts for the teachers and for the nurses. Policy. Um, it says for tomorrow, but I think that is.
Okay. Thank you. I, I was gonna ask that question. I didn't think it was on policy. I'm, I guess I'm fine with being on policy, although I didn't know I was on it. Um, so, but I did question whether it's canceled or not. So it is canceled. Conform?
Uh, program and communication, um, we met about the, um, music and the social studies curriculum changes. Anybody want to add anything to that? Uh, Judy, Eastcon or Cade?
I, I'm sorry. Could you, could you back up?
Sure.
I, I just hear that there were no, no minutes received from the October seventh meeting. Or was someone taking minutes? Do we need to set up something to take minutes? Maybe the virtual thing kind of impeded that?
I think you're right, um, because we have not assigned people. And I think with the number of people coming in and out in the virtual, um, that has not happened. So you are right, right about that, Jamie. You need to fix that.
Are we allowed to record it and take notes from our recording?
We don't typically record such meetings.
Okay. Well, we just make it easier for taking notes. I'm, I'm happy to help.
Yeah.
Uh, next time if you ask me, but, um, yeah, I, I, I might get a little off focus while I'm typing on one computer and listening on the other, but I'm, I'm happy to help. Next time.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Um, yes, I, I do not have any updates.
For Eastcon or Cade?
Well, Eastcon's meeting is always the day right after. And Eastcon is really working on its evaluation system. That's the main focus of how to evaluate during COVID, the executive director. So, um, and then Cade's biggest focus is the conference that's coming up, the year key conference. That's going to be one day and it would be great if anybody can go. I think Sue may be planning to attend, so if you can go, please reach out to her. I think you get more out of it, but you can, um, compare notes and go together.
Um, so what's the date for that? If anybody wants to go?
Um, let me look off the top of my head. I don't remember, November seventeenth maybe, but let me look really quick.
And is it an online registration for people wanting to?
I think that you just email Scott and they, they have to do it because it comes out of that budget.
Okay.
Yep. Anyone interested, just myself or Jan, I will register you and get you all set.
I think it's just one day this year too, right? I think it's. Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's just one day. It is, it is really worth going to if anybody, um. The twelfth. Is able to or has an opportunity. I'm actually, I'm actually, um, out of state for a different training. So I'm not able to go this year, but it really is worth going to.
It's in person?
Yes. It's Friday, Friday, November twelfth.
It's in person, Sue?
It, it is. It's at the Marriott. Didn't miss it? Um, yeah, missing Marriott and drop.
Kathleen, it's where, it's where we went before.
Yep. Thank you.
It does say that registration is closed, but they do have waiting lists. So if anyone's interested, let us know and we'll at least get us on the waiting list if not registered.
Everybody wants to go. That's awesome.
Yes. And I think, well, I think also they're limiting it because of COVID.
Oh, they, yes, yes.
I, I think that, that's accurate because, um, the summer workshop is limited like that.
So Sue, maybe, um, that could be something you share, um, if you, if it's possible after you go, nobody else can get in.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Public comment? Hearing none. At this time, we're on to informational items, calendar events. For middle school and high school, fifteen point one. What's, um, vision of a graduate skills and disposition?
That is, so we have, um, a program for our students in that the vision as the graduate is the, kind of the school, the overriding school goals and their expectations for students. So when our advisory groups of students, um, work on developing those skills and demonstrating that they develop those skills of problem solving, um, cooperation, that's all.
Any questions regarding the calendar? Laurie, you raising your hand?
Uh, now, please, Kathy, in, I'm just, I had to have Scott the, um, the enclosure of the calendar from last month's meeting. Um, and for October twenty-two on that one, it says delayed opening day for students. But this one just says early dismissal, as does the calendar. So I was just wondering, um, what, which one it is.
It said early dismissal.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't, we don't have any, we used to do delayed openings, but we don't do those anymore. So those are, any, any of those have professional development days or early dismissals.
I thought so, but I, I meant to ask the question last month and then I forgot. Um, and I had, I had something tagged to remind myself. So when I saw it just now, I was, I was digging through my papers to find it. So, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie. Any other questions regarding the calendar events? Discipline report, middle and high school. Any questions?
It looks like the discipline has gone down. Turned around. Is that fair shape?
It is. Yeah.
And is that, is that because of, uh, policy change or is that because of student behavior or is there some?
Um, well, I think that, that part of what we're seeing is, is related to COVID in that because we were in either a hybrid or, you know, last year in particular, our schedule was so disrupted, I mean, there'd be hybrid and have only half the number of students here on any one good day. Remember, we were hybrid up through March twenty-ninth. So a good portion of the year just looked very different. And, and our, our kind of interpretation of this was that the just physical changes that we put in place tended to put a damper on much of, kind of the student behavior that we might expect to be dealing with in the given year. So I think a lot of what we dealt with last year was, um, was due to that. And I like to think it's also the excellent work that our staff is doing in converting to our students. Um, you know, this year, if you're, if you're paying any attention to any of the news reports, you know, there are some districts that are reporting significant increases in student misbehavior and, um, even, you know, more violent student behavior in schools. I know Dr. Brizel meets, um, monthly with groups of, of principals from Eastern and Turline schools. So it takes a lot of this, you know, principals in this area. And for their, one of their last meetings, they're just so remote, um, a lot of the administrators indicated they weren't going to be able to make it because they were too busy dealing with all the discipline that was coming their way. So, you know, I think schools across the state have seen, uh, significant, well, some schools across state of cities have been, uh, taking some discipline challenges since we did that this year. And I think the, the, the sense is, is that kids are now back full-time and some of the students are having challenge managing that return. Here at Ram, you know, our numbers are still, um, comparatively very low to other districts. We are seeing an uptick of certain, uh, compared to last year.
Um, Scott and Kathleen Sherman, good, good one. Can, uh, may I add something to that?
Sure.
Okay. Um, across, across the state, we're seeing data that suggests that kids are having more mental health challenges, um, as compared to other years. And I know that, um, one of your former students is going to be, um, has contacted me and then another parent and is going to be reaching out soon, um, just to continue that conversation from last year on students and mental health. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, Eric, with your question regarding discipline, Judy, I think your comments, if, if there was ever a, um, weird picture of the need for schools and students to be in schools full-time, I mean, this was certainly, and I think, you know, we all got a, a taste of what happens if you break down kind of those social norms and try to put it back together again. Not everybody adapts just as easily as the public happens. And so, you know, between the significant of it in adolescent mental health crises and, you know, discipline issues, certainly, um, is an eye opener for all of us in terms of the importance that is displayed, not only in the community, as well, in areas as well.
And, and sometimes, as we know, some of those, um, trauma responses can look like discipline and, um, but it, it also, it borders discipline and accidental health both, or includes both, I should say.
Judy, thanks for the reminder about that. That's, that is very important.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the discipline reports from middle and high school?
Uh, Kathleen, Joe, I have a follow-up question to last month's, uh, TikTok, um, incidents. Have we seen a curtailment in that? I mean, has the, um, message been, you know, conveyed to the, to the parents and so forth? And just like to hear some follow-up on that, please.
Yeah, Joe, that, that really kind of fell off altogether. So, you know, we reached out to parents a number of times and to the community, um, when it first started, but we haven't seen any, um, suggestion that, that any of that continues beyond, you know, one or two minor incidents. Is that what you experienced? There is, it was, you know, we, we all, I think, I, I know one of the schools, I think, uh, It was, it was, you know, we, we all, I think, I, I know one of the schools, I think, shared with the media that there's, um, kind of a calendar. What was, what was presented was kind of a, a school year-long TikTok, you know, series of TikTok challenges. So each month it would be a different, grossly inappropriate challenge that none of us want anywhere, students seem to understand. And I'm happy to say that we haven't seen any of it whatsoever, of any of that occurred.
Any other questions? So we need to go into executive session? So we need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we adjourn to go into an executive session, Jean?
Jean, can you, can you add to the vice superintendent, please?
I'm sorry, Jean, it's been like this, it's been done and then, sorry, never done it before.
Thank you. A second?
This is Mary, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion?
Just, so no, people will need to log out of this meeting and into the second link for the executive session. And then following the executive session, anyone remote will need to log out of the executive session link and back into the regular meeting link, um, so that the board can vote on the motions. So Eric, you'll stay long enough to get everybody into the executive session link and then I'll come get you when you need to get everyone back into the regular meeting.
All right, uh, Judy?